Yay, good job, good job, Mrs. Hendrick. All right, welcome to the November nineteenth Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for coming. If you'd like to smack the guests. That is fantastic. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Bowser.
Here.
Mr. Hostetler.
Here.
Mrs. Paff.
Here.
And Mrs. McGraw.
Here.
Stand and do the pledge allegiance. And pledge allegiance to the
and to the for which this stands. The nation, their God, and their in terms of the problem.
The next portion is adopting the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? On the Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bowser.
Yes.
Mr. Hostetler.
Yes.
Mrs. Paff.
Yes.
And Mrs. McGraw.
Yes.
The next portion is the approval of minutes. Which meeting were you in?
October sixteenth.
The fifteenth meeting?
Or fifteenth, yes.
Can we do those separately?
Sure.
Is there a motion to approve? The meetings from the October fifteenth?
Supposed. Well, I think sorry.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bowser.
Yes.
Mr. Hostetler.
Yes.
Mrs. Paff.
Let's stay.
And Mrs. McGraw.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minute meetings from, the minute meeting notes from the meeting? Then on the twenty first of October.
Second.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bowser.
Yes.
Mr. Hostetler.
Yes.
Mrs. Paff.
Yes.
And Mrs. McGraw.
Yes.
And it's your last turn.
But we have some exciting reports this month. We have, we're gonna start with the middle school. And just pointing out, this is Mr. Johnson's first presentation as principal of coming to middle school. Mr. Johnson, Ms. Pavlich, and Mr. Shoemaker, I couldn't be more excited about the team they're becoming and the job they're doing in the middle school. I don't believe we could walk two hallways of the middle school and not see one of them any second of the day. They're always out, they're always visible, and always supporting our teachers and our students. So we're off to a great start, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson now. Thank you.
I don't want to do this alone.
This is Pavlich, and I thought the first thing we wanted to do is, we wanted to work with teachers on just building school culture, recruiting staff around. So we started off with good pop-ups, getting staff together, let them meet at once upon, just get together. We were fortunate enough, we had, the first one was a football theme, Mr. Headley out there, grilled hot dogs, and everyone brought in dishes. You know, Halloween one, this month, Thanksgiving theme, followed by the day for Christmas break, then a Christmas thing, just something to get the staff together, just so they could just get out of classrooms, go back to the teacher's line, and just hang out, talk with each other. Mrs. Ragland's hanging up a fun committee, just a committee that, where teachers can kind of brainstorm on these ideas that they could do outside of school. It was just something fun to do, just to get to know each other. We have spirit weeks coming up, where, you know, the kids will know what to wear different days, but then we'll do the underground spirit wear, or teachers wear outfits, the students have to figure out, you know, what the spirit week is all about. And still trying to get together with some monthly staff outings, going somewhere, just hanging out, just getting away from the classroom, and just getting to know each other as just people. Mrs. Ragland's also getting out wiggly appreciation gifts, little cards, little signs to say, you know, good job, you know, it was candy or a pen to go with it. And trying to do more with social media to, you know, show the good things that are going on at our middle school. We've had a lot of feedback, positive feedback from some of the videos we created. We're definitely off to create more, we want to create more, and if you have any suggestions or ones that you'd like to see, please let us know. I will look into that.
We're gonna show you a
Do you think we can go through?
It's not yours.
Yes. Okay, just go.
We can come back to that though.
And then obviously, last thing, what Mr. Pavlich said, is just, our commitment is to be visible for our staff. We want to be in the hallways, we want to be in classrooms, we want to be able to help teachers working. Our first welcome back ceremony, done the Olympics one year, we did welcome songs, this year, we had all of our staff members choose somebody from their team to get one of those glow costumes, and we did a race around the gym. The kids really liked that. Mr. Pavlich actually won. There's a little bit of pushing and shoving going on there, but it was a fun race, and just something fun to do to kick off the school year. Get the kids excited about coming to middle school.
And the common corner, I'm gonna pick on that. First of all, I have to go back to that race, that's when we found out on the first day that Mr. Pavlich is a pet. So the common corner, you guys may, I know the media center, middle school. We have talked over the several last few years about how we can transform that space, and we noticed at lunchtime, you know, after the kids would eat, they would go to interrails, some of the kids didn't want to go to interrails, so we kind of opened up that space for kids who might want to go in there. And there's a variety of games in there. I want a special shout out to Mrs. Nucy, Mrs. Nucy is a computer and technology teacher who kind of headed this up. I mean, we have ski ball in there, we have a shot basketball where they can compete against each other, checkers, air hockey, and the kids loving, love going in there. It's also useful, special, like, if we want to work with the student with their behavior, we can use it as, hey, if you hold your act together for the next five days, you get to go in the common corner. All right, let's do it. So it's really been a cool space that kids have enjoyed and will continue to enjoy.
We have a quick video to show you what our transformed Comic Closet lunch line at a middle school.
And I want to introduce you to the country middle school Comic Closet rest store. Enjoy.
Have you asked her about the Comic Closet?
No. I make the Comic Closet, I'm the head of that.
Oh, this is a nice jacket I could wear in the winter when I'm cold. Wow, this is so cool. Wait, I need these for soccer.
Hey guys, one question is, how do I get in the Comic Closet? Here's how it works. If you need something from the Comic Closet, you can see me, or you can see any other adult in the room, and they'll bring you down here during the time that fits in your schedule. You can grab anything that you want.
And that came from with, actually, I was in the high school before school started this year, and I saw their Comic Closet. And they, they've done an amazing job with their Comic Closet, went to the middle school, and let's just say it needed a lot of help. So I contacted Terry Sam's Foundation, they donated the rats that you see in there, and we got some donations coming in. We've got it, you know, looking pretty good, and a lot of students have been using it up to this point, and if we're now, we're just trying to promote it to get more kids that feel like it's okay to come and use it. And then student support and connections, there's four bullet points here. The first one, what we, what we're realizing at lunchtime, we feel like that's a, a time of the day that we could is kind of untapped for connections with kids. So what we're seeing is, you know, your standard lunchtime, where they come in, they sit down with their friends, the adults kind of just sit around the sides, sit around the side, stand around the side, manage what's going on. And we're kind of thinking about it differently, this is a time where we need to be in connecting with them. So we're looking up ideas about how we can do this, and one thing we just started, just to try it out, was conversation part. It's really simple, you just push your card around, and there's little plastic cups, and I got like a thousand of them, and there's cups, A, B, C, and D. And I come up with a question, and I ask every student during the lunchtime, like a simple question, what's your favorite candy bar? And I give them four choices, I push a card around the cafeteria, and the conversations that pop up are amazing, they're like, oh, I'm gonna do Snickers, I'm gonna do and you just start to see people come to life, start connecting, start talking. And then what's funny about it is, we get the results from that day, and then I share the results in the morning, and boy, they're upset at their choice, because not first place. But we are in the path of brain forming other ideas that, that we can do during lunchtime, to get kids talking to kids, and adults talking to other kids as well. Next one, our check-in, checkout system, is a system that we're doing with those students who might need a little extra help with academic help or behavior help, and they are going to be paired up with a mentor, a teacher in the building, and that teacher is gonna check in with them in the morning every day, they're gonna set a specific goal for them, and then at the end of each day, they're gonna check out with them to see how they're doing, so they're, they're checking in with the specific adult on a specific goal every day, twice a day. And then we had child guidance and family solutions come in, Too Good For Drugs, they're coming into the sixth and the eighth grade classes through social emotional learning lessons, along with drug prevention lessons. And the last one, our student assistance program, which is headed up by Cherry Grotowski, is an, as a counselor this year, I'm finding out more, learning more about this program. It's absolutely amazing, and we identify families and students in our school that might need a little extra support, and we connect them with outside agencies that they could benefit from, to make their life outside of school at home a little bit easier, or even the students, while we have the student in school, we have services, extra services that we provide them, to make life a little bit easier.
All right, next thing that we have is our roaming report, so the whole goal behind these roaming reports is to show our parents, to show students, to show our community, some of the amazing things that are happening in our building. Like Mr. Johnson said, we're really trying to improve the culture, and part of that is making the most of every opportunity to be positive. So I'm gonna show you one of our favorites.
We're gonna be asking people what their favorite thing is about the country. How good is our art school, and I'm here to ask them, what's your favorite thing in the country? My favorite thing is the culture and kids' culture. I think kids' culture is great, and I think our culture, our middle school, is very incredible. And I think teachers care about kids, and I think kids are really good kids, like my name, and here's Sean B.
And third, father, teacher, their ninth.
My favorite thing is all of the students that I get to interact with every day, and also my fantastic peers that I work with.
My favorite thing about elementary third grade. My favorite thing about this place, two things, it's gonna be very down the road. I love the students here, and I love the staff, but I work with everybody, it's sort of joy to come to work every day.
What is your favorite thing about the country?
I hope something everybody uses and follows.
My favorite thing about CMS is, of course, all my work, skip, and I agree.
My favorite thing about elementary school is everyone is super nice, everyone, there's no bullying. If you ever need something, if you're new here, I'll show you around, show you around your locker, except it would always help you, you pencil, they're gonna give you a pencil.
My favorite thing is being able to see students every day.
Mr. Johnson, I love the students, seeing them and their smiles every day.
What I like most about elementary school, the same thing I liked when I started, I chose middle school, and that basically spending time with the kids in the classroom. My favorite part of the day.
The passing of all the teachers.
My thing about elementary middle school are all my students, I love my students.
It's just your way of being, your greatest future there is a new school, a new school is a very difficult time for a lot of kids, and it's kind of a hurdle to change from up here to the high school. The middle ground, you're not taking this difficult, in the children's, but our kids are having the snow and the pistons finally.
My favorite thing about CMS has to be the staff and the wonderful kids that we never get. My favorite thing about this kind of school.
Went through that Coventry Middle School is the place to be because of our people, you can see how important relationships are in our building, our teachers feel that for each other, our kids feel it for each other and for the teachers, and that's one thing that we really wanted the community to know about our building. We do have a question for you all, what would you like our next roaming report to be about? We've made some, we've done some funny ones, where kids looked at an old school projector and tried to guess what it was. So if you don't have to answer right now, but think about it, we'd be happy to make something happen. Last week, we had our Veterans Day assembly, we had over twenty-five veterans come in the building, Mr. Murray did a great job organizing the event, had a lot of positive feedback from it. This year, we had a costume contest, so our kids were very excited to be able to wear a costume this year. We welcomed some special guests, you can see Mrs. Incredible, AKA Mrs. Norris, came to be one of our costume contest judges. Kids danced around and they judged the best costumes, so I'll show you a little clip of that. So our winners enjoyed gift cards, it was a lot of fun for our students, a lot of fun for our staff, and it was nice to be able to welcome guests into our building. Our CMS pals, it's like what we call our PTA, PAL stands for Parents Advocating and Learning Support, they do such a great job doing things for our building. This year, participation from both staff and parents has been higher than it has been in a number of years, so we're very excited about that. The group this year has provided breakfast and treats for staff. They've given our cafeteria team appreciation gifts, well as our custodians. They're always in our buildings and athletic events, hosting concession stands, they raise funds through pop scale, pop sales organizing, a table at Track or Treat. And right now, they are celebrating a turkey feather sale, where they are selling for one dollar a feather that goes on the teacher or staff member of the student's choice, and next Wednesday, at our November wrap-up assembly, the teacher with the most feathers going to dress up in a turkey costume and gobble around the building, so we are so excited that Mr. Johnson hopefully is gonna win that one. We're definitely excited to see that, but thank you so much for us, and we are so grateful for them.
I'm currently in last place, but Mr. Shoemaker is in second place, so, and there aren't two costumes, so.
Who's in first place of the ride?
Speaking of Mr. Baylog, two weeks ago, our choir and staff had the opportunity to go to Ashland University to take part in a college lesson. The, the, Mr. Baylog and Mrs. Strutler are the teachers of this course, and basically what this course is, is they work with college students who are aspiring to become choir directors. So we got on bus, we went to Ashland University. When we got there, we met Dr. Blackley, he's in charge of the music department at Ashland University, and the students got to see what a college choir classroom looks like. From there, we had a tour guide, and he took us all around the university, if you've ever been to Ashland University, it is a beautiful school. We got to see the library, students eat, they got to see what a classroom looks like, and we just toured the university. It was just a great experience for our kids, and then we went back to the choir room, and, oh, by the way, on our tour, the university president stopped us, and greeted us and said hi to us. I thought that was cool to be, you know, took time out of his day and evening to meet with, to meet with us. And then Mr. Baylog did the lesson, and during the lesson, he used the students' input responses as part of his discussion with the kids. So it was a great, great night, a lot of fun, and Dr. Blackley, at the end, he approached our choir and said, we have the best sounding middle school choir he's ever heard of, so I think, you know, that's a compliment in itself. So just did a really good job, and then also, Mr. Baylog, Mr. Harrison, they recognized later that same week, at the OMLA conference, for their regional award that they won, that we spoke about last year, and then on Friday, our choir got to go up and sing for the hall of teachers and administrators at the OMLA conference, and then they got to hang out at Calharde the rest of the day, so, worked on great for them. This is a great experience, music department's doing great things.
And just a quick update with STEM on behalf of Janelle Levin, Evan, who's the STEM teacher at the middle school. We have, we're at the point now where at least sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, every student that takes STEM is gonna be involved in a we have enough equipment for every student to be involved in a robotics curriculum, so they're starting to see that all the way through. We have Lego robots, we have Vex robots, and at each grade level, they're taken through, they have to different challenges and competitions, and they have to code the robots to do different tasks. And they'll be competing, last two years, they competed in a robotics competition at the ESC versus other local schools, and they're gonna be doing that again this, this month.
Okay, we've had our Coventry Middle School football, and cheer teams complete their fall season. The seventh and eighth grade football teams did a great job throughout the season. We had some really dedicated coaches that are that were new this year and are definitely very active and excited about building the program. Our volleyball team, our volleyball teams both threw a whole lot throughout, throughout the year, and our seventh grade volleyball team finishes runner-up in the conference. Both in our seventh and eighth grade teams have strong seasons.
And for cross-country, they did an amazing job, and I always said the goal is to try to get more kids to come out for cross-country. The shout-out to the elementary who has a running club, that's amazing, and I've been talking to Mrs. Repel, Mr. Savage, and after Christmas break, like, heading into springtime, we're gonna be starting one for the fifth and sixth graders at the middle school, I'm actually currently walking a course around the middle school, through the parking lot, through, down through the woods, near the entrance to the boardwalk, and along the back field to get a little course going, and I've been in contact with our high school, Nicole Berry, our high school cross-country coach, who's gonna come out in the spring one day, and we're gonna have the kids run the course, and she's just gonna be part of it, I told her she can bring some popsicles or something to encourage them. So, build, develop the program.
Track or Treat, another great event, why we were able to take part in the student council seven table, but we also had our seventh grade volleyball team seven table there. This is a great event, picks a lot of kids out, and we really enjoy it.
All right, so our first student presenters are going to be Miranda and Mackenzie Ben Arnsale, and they're gonna talk about the school store. Miranda is a fifth grader, and Mackenzie is an eighth grader, and they are simply, so we are very, very excited to hear them present a little bit about our school store.
What's a comic book?
It is money that you spend in the fun to do, kids get from being good. Who runs the comic store? Students of this service class and us, we collect comic books and set prices for, and sell items. We're taught kids by drones, microphones, stickers, books, buy stickers, squishy pants, smooth eraser, pens, fishes, buy some bracelets. This sounds like a lot of cool stuff. Who gives us everything in the comic store? Mr. Johnson.
We're very fortunate, we have, they did stuff to us, so we had a whole bunch of school supplies that come in, so we put some of that stuff out there so the kids can buy them. When they receive their comic books with their good behaviors, they can buy whatever they want, semi-under dollar, summer three, summer five. Great Western Reserve Company right here in town gave us a whole bunch of fundraiser prizes that they give away, giving boxes of them, and so we put those on the shelves so the kids can and use and play with them, it's been a great thing, these girls are an integral part of it, they take care of everything. They do the stocking, they collect the money, they make sure everything's ready to go. We don't do a thing, it's, this is all them, so, I appreciate them doing this, and a lot of kids are really enjoying the fact that they can, they can earn something tangible and go spend it, buy whatever they want at the store, so, it's a great thing, and this, this is their program, they did a great job.
Definitely put into the box, so, very excited to have it.
So we wanted to bring some other students in, and we asked all the fifth grade teachers, if there was one student that would come up front and talk with them in front of everybody, and describe what's it like being a fifth grader or a fifth grade perspective, not, not from our perspective. It's a kid, Nioka, he's an outstanding student, displays leadership, positivity, positivity, and excellence in every thing he does every day, he's natural leader in the classroom. Kid not only works hard, but inspires others around him. Kid enters, building each one with a smile, bringing energy that lifts his peers, and contributes positively to a learning environment. His teacher says he's exceptionally kind, consistently demonstrates strong character, whether he's participating in classroom discussions, collaborating with others, tackling challenging assignments. Kid always gives his best effort. Kid, kid is a remarkable student, and is definitely an asset to our school. Okay, go ahead.
English language arts have been some ancient civilizations, varying minds, and Aztecs, check out the Mayan myths for the West. Then, drug abuse resistance education has been underway, look out, well, this group of learners is this peer pressure, they look forward to a healthy today and tomorrow. Veterans Day preparation, students work together and create colored posters for our guests, and create columns that will lead to our guest tomorrow. Oh, and by the way, those posters are very, they should consider becoming artists. Our science system is heartily, started the year off with physical science, exploring light reflects, 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 absorbs light, and challenge that classes we're given. Explain how reflection works at home, so exciting to hear when the students don't the teachers. Other than that, we also have been exploring sound energy, with homemade instruments, and bouncing, unbalanced forces, and traditions. Oh, and I also brought that picture. While these mathematicians have been put to the test, multiplying whole numbers, evaluating exponents, finding prime factorization, multiplying those digit numbers using numbers using partial products. Currently, they are mastering all of it. Check out the peer groups teaching and learning from my mother.
There, what's, what's the fifth grade walk party?
Basically, when Mrs. Mrs. Padler comes in with the boombox, the bass, Larry songs, and has everybody come in. And we all dance and have a fun time. And it really gets me excited for a fun day on Friday.
All right, very good. The sixth grade teacher, Danny Anderson. Danny is an exceptional student. His character worked out in such a part, a true role model at Coventry Middle School. His teachers say Danny is simply polite, positive, respectful. He approaches each day with a hardworking mindset, always giving his best effort and showing maturity way beyond his years. One of Danny's most admirable habits is his respect he shows to his teachers. Always addressing them by their name and gaiting to them, having thoughtful conversations. His leadership's quiet but powerful. He leads by example and embodies all the qualities that we have with the whole during the comment. And in words of Danny's sixth grade math teacher, this guy, Danny's just awesome.
So, these are our September, October stretch students. September, we have Ali Ringus, Bee, Basely, Aiden Fadman, Lacy Henry, Laura Honeycutt, Egeal, you know, thousand, yeah, and she was asked to stay, but we're canceled. And for October, we have Isaac, Jacob, Friday Wolsey, Amy Nardi, Robert Evans, Avery Rogers, Gemma Count, Division, and Agent Freshwater. In science, we were, we had two maps. And the first one was with Play-Doh sequence. We mixed them together to make like a Ben and Mortimer. Then the second one was with Starburst, it like breaks the whole part for segments. Then put them together to make a segment, so you're off. And then we like melted them, and heated them and burnt them, and Ben and Mortimer. Then we put them in the microwave and melted them, and then they turned into a liquid. These are the growth about words that we made in the time that it was speaking spots. Players based off the book called Growth About by John Gorgin, a PJ class. And they're really good. Students put their favorite things on them. And then Scott, this is, I started our third year after rock program, which stands for Golden Guardians. It's with twelve six-year-olds. They've already had four lessons, but the people who have the program on you. Instead, the students say they like rocker bands, rocker bands. And I say their names, have some of their favorite things on them. They look really good.
Okay, up next for seventh grade, we have Lucas Hossdeller. And I've had a chance to have Lucas in, in class. And I just want to say that I would kind of think of him as a, a quiet leader. And I've one that's always doing what he's supposed to be doing. Talk to the teachers, and they just had nothing but positive things to say about his quiet leadership. He also was on the cross-country team and had a baseball player. And his teachers just had amazing things to say about him. So, first seventh grade, Lucas Hossdeller.
These are our seventh grade star students from the first time we created period. They were chosen for demonstrating miniature characteristics of a problem. Students created posters representing either ancient Athens or Sparta in social studies classes. After all, students presented their projects, students and staff got a chance to vote for the best project for each. Congratulations to the winners, Leah Ellen, Dante, and Max. Seventh grade, our students explore our own web and ecosystem and share their discoveries with others from a greater understanding and appreciation. Seventh grade science, these are some pictures from Mrs. Burns' class. She's a great science teacher with 5.72. So it's great visits to the water, church, New Richmond. Also, with great students, they were naturalists from the Blue Mountain Parks, exploring ecosystems. Those are ecosystems like grasslands, wetlands, and so it's great. So students designed a 3D printed personalized machine.
Right, and our grade representative is Isaac Basinger. Isaac was chosen by his teachers because he is a strong leader. He's always doing what he's supposed to be doing. He has great grades. And he's definitely a kid that we want other kids to kind of follow suit from. He's become one of my go-to kids. When I have a question and I want to get a student's perspective, I'll come to Isaac and he'll give it to me straight. So I really appreciate that. And word on the street is, since our roaming reporter, Sean Taylor, has moved, Isaac may be our new roaming reporter. So we're very, very excited for the prospects of that.
Students who worked hard the first quarter to be eligible for the field trip to Taco. On Halloween, we took 101 eighth graders to celebrate their willingness to take accountability for their grades and behavior. We received many positive comments about how polite our students were during the trip. As a part of our curriculum for career and college readiness, our eighth grade students visited the Portage Lake Center, ELCC, this week, and will be doing more career exploration with Mr. Schumaker in the upcoming weeks. The students, they turned science, the students had different stations, big operations about magnetic and static electricity. Students were learning about elastic potential energy by stretching a rubber band and pulling back on a monster truck and measuring how far it traveled. In current sense, students were able to learn by, to play by, play with microbits. Microbits are many computers that students can use to learn how to code. Students use the microbits to make magic eight ball, digital names, pedometers, and digital games.
A lot of good things going on at the middle school. We just have a lot of great kids, great kids, great staff, and this, everything's going very well. And the message still I think that to cover, I think we have a lot of good ideas coming our way that we'll to, uh, I'll share next time we meet. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our families for coming, and thank you to the presenters for doing such a great job. Awesome. The next thing we have, I think the kids will appreciate this. That we work on attendance and we celebrate perfect attendance with our staff as well as with our students. So today, we're going to recognize our 11 staff members that had perfect attendance last year. And if I'm right, I believe just one showed up. They, they got to get their rest so they can be at work. But I'll go through the list and we'll have our one person come up. So on our list here, we have Ms. Betty Bounce, Ms. Don Dancy, Joe Danko, and then Ms. Delinsky. We also have Mrs. Hicks, Mr. Coveen, Ms. LaMaster, Ms. McGulick, Ms. May, Mr. Olson, and Mrs. Smith at the bus garage. So we are appreciative of all of those people and the hard work thinking for our, our students every day.
And fun fact of the 11 people who are on our perfect attendance, seven of them are your bus drivers. So let's thank our bus drivers.
Extremely thankful, based on the staffing in, in bus drivers in Ohio, that ours are so dedicated and getting here every day. Lastly, under district updates, we have Ms. Kelly Pender, who is going to share with you a facilities update.
Good evening, I'm just a good morning. I'm Kelly Tendrick, I'm the executive operations director of the Soul's Chamber. Today, I'm here to talk about capital improvements and just projects that we have on our district. Before I begin with the capital improvements, I want to mention that I had a slideshow of the projects that we had done from 22 to 25. And I will share that certainly out with the board and we'll post it on the board's website. But I, I, I encourage you to look through that. There I had 37 slides of projects that we've have done between, for the last three years, from 22 to, to, to present. And for me, that is a wonderful compliment, really, to the board's education, who is really committed to improving our facilities and making sure that our buildings are safe and secure for our staff and our students. So, again, I will share that out. But before I begin with too much, I want to take a moment to personally thank my team. Which some of you may know, but many of you probably don't. But specifically Gary Olson, who is our maintenance supervisor, and Kelly Raketh, who is my assistant. These two individuals were tirelessly, tirelessly in the background. They help projects keep on track. They help make sure that they are completed on time. They're constantly in communication with me. And honestly, I couldn't do it without either one of those. In the same regard, I really want to give shout-out to and recognize all the members of our support staff. And we don't want to forget anybody, but in our transportation department, as we're talking about the bus drivers, in our food service programs, in our custodial department, our technology department, and our maintenance department. All of those individuals, when you talk about capital improvements or anything that we are doing with facilities, technology, food service, all of those people are working every day to make sure that their departments are achieving the goals. So I just really want to shout out to all of that. And of course, thanking you guys as I did earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that you understand. I, for me, seeing all these projects come to fruition has just been a tremendous joy. I get very excited about it. I get excited about something being painted or something being fixed. It just makes me very happy to walk around the district and, and just recognize the things that have been done in the last three or four years. So I do want, I want to thank you for that. So tonight, I'm just here to talk about capital improvement project planning, just a mouthful, I know. But I just want to mention that that is vital to our district. It's something that all of us, even in this room, should be aware of. Because it ensures that our facilities, our buses, and resources are safe, modern, and they're able to support high-quality learning. And that's really what we're all about, is to make sure that our students and staff have what they need to, to do what they need to do. So thoughtful planning allows us to address aging infrastructure of an equipment, which we have had. And to make sure that we are updating those as needed, to integrate new technology, to improve efficiency and reliability, and to create environments for students and staff to thrive. So over the years, we presented a lot of lists to the board of capital improvements that we need to do or would like to do. And those lists, along with the document that you have in front of you, the spreadsheet that you have in front of you, are our running records of projects both that we have completed and those that we hope to complete in the next few years. So it's important to note that all of our lists are fluid. So they're not standalone documents. They can change based on fiscal adjustments or emergencies come up, or honestly, unexpected opportunities come up that we take advantage of that too. So the document is not set in stone, but it is a roadmap of where we would like to be in next year, the year following, and so forth. So also, I want to mention that our team gets together regularly and we evaluate that document. We evaluate what projects we're doing, where we at, where do we want to go with the project? And that's an important piece of it as well. Also, the document that's in front of you is a baseline plan. It highlights projects across the facilities, transportation, and technology, including maintenance, safety improvements, technology upgrades, and other initiatives designed to enhance the learning environment and extend the life of our building and resources. And that's really our goal in our department, is to expand our, extend our resources as long as we can. Our building, keeping them in good shape, so they're here for generations of comments to come. So as you review the plan, I just ask that you realize that the plan spans from now until fiscal year '29. So it's a four-year plan. And projects include things with facilities, grounds, buses, and technology. But one project that I will mention that is not on your list is a potential partial renovation of the middle school cafeteria serving line. But that project is based on kitchen funding, and if we can support that. But we would like to modernize this checkout line and move some things around in that kitchen, which is a tiny kitchen, to maybe streamline some processes within the kitchen. So that's one thing that we, we would add, I think, to that paper, just for your information. The other thing that I would like to talk about is some wonderful news. The operations department in this past week has had three amazing things happen in one week, and one of which made me cry. So I, I just have to share it with all of you to send you to know. One of which is Poply Fairline Schools was, had some furniture, some classroom furniture that they didn't need anymore. So they called up and they said, really, basically, do you want? So last Thursday, our administrative team, some of our administrative team, went to Poply High School and met their head custodian, who's a wonderful man. And we were able to get student chairs that we needed, some student desks, some filing cabinets that we needed, and some tables. And some of that furniture is already in classrooms at this particular point. I mean, we came back and put them in glass rooms, you know, right away. So it was, I just want to say to Poply Fairline Schools, thank you very much for that. That was a very generous thing. And on a side note, I'm in a side conversation with another school about science lab tables. Because we need science lab tables at the middle school. So hopefully that will pan out as well. Second thing that happened was, just happened today, received an email that tomorrow our two new buses are going to be delivered. And so we are very excited about our buses arriving. You know, having two new buses in the fleet and replenishing those buses on a regular basis is a very, a very important part of our capital improvement plan. So we are, we're keeping up with that. Obviously, safe and reliable buses are a key to getting our students, students safely to school. And so that's, that's the second thing. The third thing is what brought tears to my eyes. So this has to do with student lunches. On Monday, we received a very generous donation from the Sons of Herman on Waterloo Road. Lodge number 10's president personally came to our offices and hand-delivered checks for a total of $1,333.39 to pay out student lunch allowance. And, you know, donations, donations like this are so meaningful because we, we want all students to feel that they have a hot meal during the day, and that that then can help them in learning classes. It's a very important passion of mine. So when he came with the checks, I started crying. I mean, I just did, just, can I help you? Said, yes, you can. And, and he was just the nicest gentleman. And he actually called out of the blue. Because we're really an affluent city, but he called, he called out of the blue and said, is there, do you, we, I'd like to make it, with our Sons of Herman would like to make a donation. Can we make a donation? And so then we got him the information that we needed, he needed, in order to write the check. So that, that money is going directly back in to So that, that money is going directly back into student accounts and the food service. So I'm just, throw it out. So thank you to them as well. And so with that, I just want to say thank you to the board for your generous willingness to help with all of our capital improvements, be that technology or busing or food service or custodial or maintenance, and there's so much. I really believe that our support staff, this quiet, or the quiet ones, who are always sending to really make our buildings run smoothly. But that a lot of, you know, a lot of people don't even know who our active custodians are. But they're doing work, you know, even as we speak, you know? And so I just really have a passion to, to let people know that the support staff is here because they want our students to succeed as much as, as we all do. So, thank you.
I can just end before we move on. All of our educational updates and spotlights are fun, but this was a special one. This was a great feel-good one from the, the middle school's presentation. Our perfect attendance, all the way to ending on, you know, the graciousness of the Sons of Herman to help our families. You know, this is a difficult time for a lot of families economically. So it was fantastic that came in to help those families of students that are, that are struggling a bit. So thank you to everyone. It was a great update.
There's no citizen participation, correct? All right, the next portion is our Board of Education comments.
Kelly, where is this center?
Waterloo Road, when you, when you pass I and Eagle and under the bridge, it's to the right. And we do have thank you notes we are sending in.
I'd like to go, thank you. I like that the part about students helping students and also teachers helping students. It's sometimes we don't realize that we're doing more than just teaching. We're actually trying to set a footprint for kids and they're watching us as teachers. And, and it's an important point to make sure that we don't lose sight of something like that. And then the, she made a, she made a comment about the things, the way things used to be and how much they've changed. And I was just going back to the old days of the film strip projector. Probably somebody probably too young for that. I know, or a VHS, or a Beta. I mean, those are before getting a CD type of things. And then congratulations to the volleyball team on the runner-up, the seventh graders. That was a great deal. And the watershed, I noticed the watershed, where is that? For the field trip, on one of the slides, we went to the watershed. And of course, we followed up with what it is and how it works and why there is such a place.
Yeah, if, well, if you haven't had a chance to, I, I love the exact address. I actually visited when it first opened up. I don't know if you've been there, you've been there? Yeah. And they have, I'm sure it's improved since, as I said, but they have hiking trails in the back. And then once you go away, you learn all about water sheds and clothes around the Akron, Cleveland area.
Because when you go across the interstate, going into New York City, you end up having a little loop there with the Cecil Hannah River and there's a watershed area in there and they have a nice stop. And our kids need to realize how many good things there are to go see in the area where we are. Not just the national parks, but all the other parks in, in combination. So I'm beginning to have those kids take their little trips with moms and dads, family units. And, you know, who knows, maybe, maybe your son will buy you an ice cream. Okay, that's it.
So I've kind of repeated some things. First of all, thank you. There are some like memorable ones. I've been on the school board for kind of a while. We've done these off and on over the years. And one I remember was, I don't even remember when, but like the rappers, when the elementary school teachers were rapping that one time. That was very interesting. But this was definitely like a memorable one. I don't remember any one where there were so many students even close, like involved in the update or the presentation. So thank you to all the students. And it's super cool to see like all the families of all the students and the brothers and sisters of all the students. That's cool. So thank you for coming. When I pulled in, I was like, oh no, what's going on? Yeah. So yeah, so thanks for coming and thanks for doing it. And that was a super cool presentation. I do have like, I'll just say it like here, so something that would be kind of cool is that roving, sorry, I forget what you call it exactly. But it's, yeah, is what would be, and maybe you've done it and I just haven't seen it. Like what's a new or different thing, like a positive thing, not like what do you dislike or what's bad? But what's a new or different thing that you would like appreciate having here, the opportunity to, you know, participate in or learn about? It just would give us like, maybe you, I don't know, but like a different take on something that like, hey, there's something you could do. You know, based on student, we don't get that in a lot. So yeah, sure. And then, yes, Kelly, thanks again for the presentation, for actually pulling this together. I know we've been way better the last few years about keeping this tracking stuff and putting these lists together. But this is awesome to actually have a plan and have some, I see, you know, your some grants are submitted. Trying to get some of the funding. And I know you've gotten a lot of grants. You, you laterally, you didn't mention any of that for a lot of stuff that's been done. So thank you for keeping the list and thanks for moving it forward. That's awesome.
Mine will be short and sweet. So all of the speakers, the students, I just want to say, I appreciate your bravery for coming here today and for standing up in front of a whole bunch of people for doing this. This was super cool. I'm very, very proud of you. And thank you for starting our meeting and standing here patiently while we were waiting. But I just, I'm really, really proud of you. It shows that you have just some good guts going on there. And I'm thankful that you came and, and showed us that. Thank you for your leadership at the middle school, you know, Talia. Thank you. It's just fantastic. And it just seems like you guys are really moving and grooving in a really good place. And you could see it from your kids, you could see it from, you know, what you guys take videos out. So just thank you for, for letting that be infectious to the rest of the, the group. And the middle school or the elementary school has their own vibe going, as does the high school. So it's just neat to see a window into what you guys do every day. Thank you very much for being there. And then for Kelly, like the other Kelly, I know the other Kelly, right? She is just the bomb when it comes to quoting everything and all the things. She's amazing. And Gary as well. And then everyone else on your team really gets the kudos for making this place run every day. So just tell them thank you for all the jobs that they do, all the things that nobody knows about ever gets done. So just don't forget for us.
Yeah, I'll just echo what the rest of the board members said, especially the kids that came and spoke. That's a hard thing to do, to stand up in front of a room of adults when they're all staring at you. Are you guys nervous? Nervous? Yeah, it's okay. It's all right. But I promise you that the more you do it, the easier it gets, the better you'll be at it. And it's a great life skill. So anytime you guys get a chance to get up in front of a crowd, even if you're really scared or nervous, take a shot at it. You all did great. So thank you.
Mine is a little bit different, but I would like to, I wasn't here last month. And I would like to be certain that we remember Jack Frieder. He was a longtime educator here in Coventry Schools, a lifelong educator, actually. And that may have been done last month, but I just want to be certain that we remember him. And he was a very kind man. And the things that we've talked about tonight would be right up his alley. So he and his wife and his daughter have given a lot of years to Coventry Schools. And I just want to be sure to, to remember him. So thank you.
Okay, so this is the portion of the meeting that we go on to do business-y things that are, you don't have to be here for them. So if you would like to leave, we'll give you a few minutes to get up and leave if you'd like to. Or you can stay and listen to us go on about our operations portion of our meeting. So you have like a minute and a half to get out of here, or you can stay if you'd like.
Whose birthday? Way to spend it.
We are now engaged.
Okay. Hey, Dan.
My fourth grade in front of the cemetery. And it was not a read.
So this is the of our meeting, that is for this. Okay, are you ready?
Yes. Superintendent Recommendation Certified Personnel, number one. I feel like a broken record. We've, I feel like we've done these every single month. Well, I'm excited for the staff members. I, there is a part of me that doesn't like reading these each, each month. But number one, a retirement resignation. It's recommended the board accept the retirement or the resignation due to the retirement of the following employee for the position indicated effective May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. And that's for Ms. Malinkovich here at the high school, who does a fantastic job. I think she might have been one of the first staff members I met when I came to Coventry. She was just as amazing an individual. I met her on the first day as she is today. So we wish her nothing but the best. Number two is long-term substitute. It's recommended the board employ the following as a long-term substitute for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at the rate of a hundred and ten dollars per teacher workday. Long-term substitute pay is based on actual days worked. And that's for Faith Dawson, who had just finished up her student teaching with Mr. Bef, and she's going to fill in for Mrs. Phillips. Number three is employment, teaching assignments. It's recommended the board employ the following position indicated effective with the second semester of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that's for Mrs. Strebler to move from part-time only at the high school to now be the high school choir and full-time, full-time in general, the high school choir. And she'll also pick up Ms. Masters, who's retiring at the semester break. She'll pick up the electives for fifth grade and eighth grade at the middle school, as well as she is working with another staff member on some ideas about doing some career exploration with some of the students. Number four, supplemental coaching contracts, twenty-five, twenty-six. It's recommended the board grant and or reissue the following supplemental coaching contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year per exhibit S-one. Non-staff contracts are contingent upon receipt of a clear record of the required background checks. Number five, supplemental coaching contracts, twenty-five, twenty-six. It's recommended the board grant and or reissue the following supplemental coaching contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Non-staff contracts are contingent upon receipts of a clear record of the required background checks. And that's for Mr. Snyder to take over our varsity baseball program. Mr. Snyder was one of three individuals indicated. Tommy's here to support Mr. Snyder. His passion, his knowledge, and his love of Coventry was the theme that came out of the interviews. So he shined in the interviews and it was a, it's a good choice. He's excited. We're excited to see where he takes the program. Building supplemental contracts, twenty-five, twenty-six. It's recommended the board grants the following CMS building supplemental contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that's Ms. Burns and Ms. Newsey. Just noting that both of these next two were errors in my office. We had accidentally omitted them from the list we approved last month. And that was pointed out to us. So we're just fixing that accidental omission. Number seven, CES contractual supplemental contracts, twenty-five, twenty-six. It's recommended the board grant the following CES contractual supplemental contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that's Miss Galamo for the vocal musical, or vocal music activities. Number eight, supplemental contracts for our mentors for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It's recommended the board grant the following supplemental contracts for mentorship for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. One of the side effects of all of our retirements are we are hiring new staff who require mentors. So you could see how long the list is based on the number of new staff we hired over the last couple of years. And those are all of the items under certified personnel.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendations?
She moved second.
No discussion? I have one comment about Mr. Snyder for the baseball, varsity baseball. I had a parent call me and say, this guy's awesome. He helped my daughter and we should hire him. And I'm like, oh, okay, I think we're going to do that tonight. So he'll be really happy.
And I just want to acknowledge Ms. Malinkovich too. I mean, this has been a tough time, but she's like been awesome. She's been here like forever also. And I do like, appreciate, this is one of the, I think, best years for modifications. Last year, like a lot of times in past years, a lot of teachers would just come down to the end of the year and then it would be like, oh, I mean, fine. You know, and then they retire. So I think it's great that people are giving us advance notice. But, you know, Ms. Carr was like, by poster child, she gets like a full year, you know? But so anyways, I just really appreciate all she's done, what her parents have done, and she will be missed too.
Any other comments? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fowson?
Yes.
Sir Astetler?
Yes.
Yes.
And Ms. McGraw?
Yes.
Item number two, personnel classified. Number one is a change in hours, buildings, positions. It's recommended the board approve a change in the hours, buildings, and our positions for the following employee. And that's Mrs. Smith from two-point-five-hour CES lunch recess assistant to seven-hour CES classroom attendant. Number two, resignation. It's recommended the board accept the resignation of the following employee for the position indicated effective eleven eighteen twenty-five. And that's Ms. Navar as a three-hour cooks helper. And she had just found other employment as the reason for the resignation. Number three is rescind stipend. It's recommended the board rescind the following CMS school crossing guard stipend and that's Ms. Phillips for the AM of the second semester. Number four is bus driver training reimbursement. It's recommended the board approve reimbursement for any newly hired bus drivers, training, and certification costs up to five hundred dollars upon completion of a hundred and eighty days of service with the district. Employees must submit receipts or proof of payment to receive reimbursements. And that's an item we had talked about, I believe, at the work session. Number five, there's an error, there's a typo in number five, so I need to point that out and correct the last, the last amount there. It's recommended the board approve the following increase in pay for classified substitutes. So from tomorrow on, the rate for classified substitutes will be thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents effective August first. It will move to thirteen seventy-five, and the last one should be fourteen twenty-five, not a repeat. So just to make sure we're aware, fourteen twenty-five effective August first of twenty-twenty-seven. And those are all of the items under personnel certified.
There should be pull the, the classified out and vote on it separately?
Yes.
Do we have to make a motion?
You want to vote on the rest of them and not abstain from all of them?
We'd like to vote on all of them. Can we do that separately?
Yes.
Do I have to make a motion to pull it out separately?
Um, no, we just probably should do a motion for items one through four and then a motion for item five.
Is there a motion to vote on items one through four in this list?
So moved.
I'd like to comment on number four during the
Discussion comment?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll second.
Okay. I'd like to say how good that is because during the litigation, during, during another time, I had a lot of during during another time, I had a lot of us people coming up to him saying, other schools do this, other schools, you know? And that, and we are doing this. And I think that's a good deal because, you know, if they could go somewhere else and do their thing. And I go, but we want you to stay here too. They go, well, we would if we go ahead. Yeah, they're gonna always, yeah, yeah. But that I, that that's a good deal. Just covering that if they're gonna stay here with us. Okay, that's all.
Are there any other comments?
I just have a question about the stipend. Is it, you know, is there somebody else who's like in the wings ready to step up for the crossing guard? I know that's kind of crazy.
We're gonna post it tomorrow. Uh, so let's see if we get some interest.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'd like to point out that currently Mr. Shoemaker, Mr. Johnson, and this Paveltre trading covering it in the morning currently. Um, so hopefully we can find someone so they get back in the buildings and do their uh, student supervision.
It does seem like a lot more organized now. Like I've driven right there a couple of times just to passing. It seems like everything's just kind of calm and people just wait and, you know, just be like the wild west out there. So cool, but.
Well, the church is a great partner. I can't say enough uh, how much they help us out and and uh, they allow the kids to come in inside their lobby when it's cold. Um, I mean, they're a great partner all the way around, but they clearly they're helping the mornings too. So hopefully there'll be somebody saying, I think so. That's what I was saying.
It is. That's true.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Mr. Hasstetler?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGraw?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for number five, substitute rate of pay? Is a man, yeah.
I'll second.
Discussion? Follow.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Mr. Hasstetler?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGraw?
Number three, other business items. Number one, contract with Tangiers. It's recommended the board approve the contract with Tangiers for the CHS Suma Celebration banquet. Their cost of one thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, which would be paid using principal fund oh eighteen. Number two is a contract with Tangiers. It's recommended the board approve the contract with Tangiers for prom twenty twenty-six. At no cost to the district, the entire contract is paid for by student raised funds in the purchase of prompt tickets. Number three, contract with Akron Civic Theater. It's recommended the board approve the contract with the Akron Civic Theater for the purpose of holding graduation on May twentieth, twenty twenty-six. Total cost is five thousand five hundred dollars. Number four is a contract with Learn Well Education. It's recommended the board approve the contract with Learn Well Education for a resident student who is currently a residential patient at Belmont Pines Hospital at a cost of fifty-three dollars and fifty cents per hour. Number four is a contract with Learn Well Education. It's recommended the board approve the contract with Learn Well Education is a blanket contract for any additional students that may be placed in residential settings where Learn Well is providing education for our resident students at fifty-three, fifty per hour. Uh, the reason for that request is so that we can just keep their um, keep everything moving as the students get placed and uh, keep their education uh, continuing. Number six is proposal with TKE elevators. It's recommended the board approve the proposal from TKE elevators to change the hydraulic oil in the passenger elevators at Coventry High School at a cost of fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. Just reminding everyone that a lot of times we forget there's a second elevator in this building, um, in the back athletic hall that goes to the the weight room, uh, mezzanine area on the second floor. Uh, we've been having uh, some troubles with the uh, elevator out front here. And uh, the belief is if we can get this uh, hydraulic oil changed, we can better troubleshoot um, the issues we're having. It's randomly stopping at different uh, floors. Um, so once this is approved, I believe they're gonna come in right away to help fix this issue because we have a number of students that need the elevator to get to their classrooms, uh, to uh, have access to their educations. Number seven is agreement with Gardner. It's recommended the board approve the agreement with Gardner for the water treatment service at Coventry Middle School at an annual cost of one thousand three hundred dollars to be effective December first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The first service will be paid in quarterly amounts of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. This was a recommendation um, for Mr. Olson as he was preparing the chiller uh, it to at the middle school to turn over the heat. He has to drain cold water out, let it warm up, and then pump it back uh, through the system. As he was doing that, the quality of the water, um, it was murky, not as bad as when we did a lot of the work a few years ago. Uh, but it was murky enough that he was concerned he'd like to see it get back to the state it should be in to protect the investment of the chiller. Number eight is accept donations. It's recommended the board accept the following donations. Uh, the first one is one thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars as a retrofit to the elementary gym basketball uh, backboards. And this will make the basketball hoops adjustable. Um, use uh, basketball uses that for their events. Um, that's why they were willing to split the cost with us so that we can lower it down to an appropriate height for the students that are competing. And it also allows Mrs. Antrim to do more skills uh, during the day in her physical education classes because now the hoops would be at a more appropriate level for her students as well. And the other one, which is Miss Kendrick pointed out, the one thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents to help our families um, that had bunch balances. And number nine, a capital improvement plan. It's recommended the board approve the capital improvement and project plans per exhibit S two, which is uh, what Mrs. Kendrick has shared with you. Those are all of the items under other business.
Is there a motion to approve these recommendations? I'll second. Any discussion?
I have just a question. The quote for um, the elevator contract that we received was for seven thousand one hundred dollars. Is that per elevator?
That's my understanding, that it's per elevator.
Okay, it's just not clear on the quote. I mean, that's okay, but then the the motion is for fourteen thousand. Is that? I'm sorry. Okay, but each one is seventy. It doesn't say on here that it's for one elevator or two.
In the actual files online, there's two separate documents and they're both seventy-one hundred a piece. It says uh, elevator one and elevator two.
Okay, that clarifies it. Okay, thank you.
If I can just chime in there too, if you remember back in June, we did this exact same thing for the elementary. I think it was June, it was in summertime. We had to um, have maintenance on the uh, elementary elevator as well.
And just, just for clarification with the capital projects, capital improvement plan, each one of these will be presented to us individually when the time comes for approval, right? This is just.
It's just a master document.
Yeah.
Yes, all rules that by law still will follow for.
Kelly, I'm gonna ask you, I'm not sure, maybe just like George's question, I don't know, but about the schedule for the purchasing the replacement buses. So we did two.
Replacement buses.
So we didn't, are we gonna do like, is the plan to do like two every other year or something like that?
Well, I have a plan.
Yes, we're doing two this year. Let's pick me here. Three the next year. That's a year and two like that's the plan. So they're just going on a rotation like the oldest bus will ever be like twenty-five years old or something like that. I mean, that's this week and a half now. Twenty, we had like twenty-five or something, right?
Well, twenty or two. We have quite a few buses that are getting six years old. Two, both read for for bus arm handers. And that was one thing that would put our score higher if we leave only buses that were newer. Um, so in six years, so do you know that? Or would you have, I was surprised. Kelly Smith would know the exact number.
Okay, well, that's okay. But so somewhere in the twenties, so some of our buses, like if we do this schedule, are gonna be twenty-ish years old by time to replace drivers. I'm twenty-one bus a year and we have twenty-some buses. So I don't know, like, with the twenty-five-year-old buses. Yeah, that's what I mean. I'm just. Dude, that's what I'm just.
I don't, I don't think twenty, but uh.
I know, but some of them will be that old. This rotation.
Twelve of them out of the twenty are within five years because we just finished paying off the lease. That was a five-year lease. Uh, so the majority of our fleet is actually pretty new.
They're pretty new now. I'm just thinking down the road. This is cool. We have a schedule. But so there's five-year-old buses. By the time they come up, it's gonna be two, ten or twenty years from now, maybe. Anyways, I'm, I won't be around here then, but. But that was how we ran into a huge problem in this district. Buses, I mean, buses didn't tank us, but they were a huge problem. They contributed to it when we went to the leasing program because our buses were so so maintenance intensive, that we kind of had to go to to something else to fix them at that point. And so I think we've done a really good job collectively of getting to a place where the, we're like actually controlling it and turning the job. But if also we start having a bunch of twenty-year-old buses again, it's gonna start like, it just looks like bad sight. I'm just mentioning, there's no criticism or it's not, you know, I think against this plan, but just please keep that in mind.
It just, just to point out too, on on this capital plan, it says two to three buses. And it could do, there's enough money for three buses each each purchase, so that might reduce, that would reduce the age if, but yeah, we'll keep an eye on it. Good point.
Yeah.
Point, because twenty-year-old buses.
Okay, yeah. I could just add in, I'm getting instant feedback from people watching. We have twenty-one buses, according to Mrs. Smith.
So it won't be twenty-five years old.
Two to three a year.
It's not a year, Dan, that's point.
Well, that's what this is, two to three on this one.
Right.
But that's not necessarily every month.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
It's just, I mean, it sounds kind of goofy, but it's really important. And it really did, I had a life really chilled us fifteen, ten years ago, that buses were.
With inflation, they're even more expensive. And they, I mean, they were hard to buy in the past. Now we're even more difficult with the, how the price has gone up. So it's definitely a huge expense, but we gotta stay ahead of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Any more discussion?
Davis? Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Mr. Hasstetler?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Okay, under um, treasurer's recommendations this evening, we have item one. It is recommended that the board approve and place on file the October twenty twenty-five financial report. And I'm gonna ask you to please cross out reconciliation. Um, that component is not by the law, so I will add that to next month's agenda. Um, but the financial report is is in, is in and I'm a part of Board Docs and Dropbox. So just that piece per exhibit T one. Item two, it is recommended that the board approve the POs over five thousand per exhibit T two. Item three, it is recommended that the board approve the contract with Quadiant, BC USA for the rental of postage equipment for a term of sixty months with a total cost of nine thousand six hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents per exhibit T three. This would replace our Kenehe Bose contract that is expired. Um, number four, it is recommended that the board approve the resolution updating the district section one twenty-five cafeteria plan and general procedures in accordance with section one twenty-five IRS requirements and regulations per exhibit T four. Item five, it is recommended that the board approve the resolution authorizing the advancement of local taxes by the county fiscal office in accordance with sections three, two, one, dot three, four of the Ohio revised code per exhibit T five. Item six is recommended that the board certify the Phyllis and Bob Longworth Endowment Scholarship portfolio with Wells Fargo Advisors. Um, that it is a hundred thousand dollars or less authorizing the treasurer to claim the exemption from filing an investment policy with the auditor of state pursuant to Ohio revised codes one three five point one four for the adoption of the resolution of exemption from investment policy filing per exhibit T six. Item seven, it is recommended that the board approve the general comp agreement and disclosure document regarding the Phyllis and Bob Longworth Endowment account terms as outlined by Wells Fargo Advisors for exhibit T seven. And that includes items one through seven.
Is there a motion to approve these recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Follow.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bowser?
Yes.
Mr. Hasstetler?
Yes.
Mrs. Pat?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGraw?
Yes. All right, so there is not a need for executive session at this point, right?
I'll need one next month to share a personnel issue with you.
All right, so then if there need be no business uh, before the board, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in the meeting room?
Thank you so much.
So.